I think so, it looks still connecting, but yes.
All right, we'll proceed.
The Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation have been after us to update our jail contracts. And I had Adam working on that. I talked to Kelly and she went through the proposed contract and she said that she thinks it's a good contract. A couple of things that you would notice about the contract is we Grant Forks went up to a hundred dollars a day, we put ours at ninety-five dollars. And we also changed the fact that we had entities bringing prisoners in and we would do the hook them in and then in an hour or so they would bond out or the court would release them. This which tied up the jailers and we were not able under that current contract to charge any of the entities for had to be a minimum of one day stay. This new contract would allow us to charge for any if they're booked in or whatever, it would charge them for one day's service. So it would take care of the us not being compensated for jailer's time when they bring a prisoner in and they automatically get released. So I think it's a fair contract for everybody. And I would ask that you guys approve the contract. It's made up to the three entities, the city of Grafton, the County of Cavalier and the County of Trail. Which have been the three entities we've boarded prisoners for in the past year. Without the contract.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
A further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So you said they would pay us ninety-five dollars a day?
Ninety-five, yes.
What do we pay when we have to take our inmates elsewhere?
We're paying a hundred dollars in Grand Forks.
Hundred in Grand Forks, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And everybody, everybody is right around the ninety-five dollar a day at this point.
Okay. All right.
We are currently at eighty-five.
Okay. Sounds good.
How long is this contract for? I guess I didn't read it.
Said inevitable.
One year or?
Yeah, I think I can tell there's a clause where they can get out of the contract, but it would continue moving forward unless they asked to be released from it.
Well, I'm just sort of curious if Grand Forks keeps pumping us up and we get to a hundred and ten, can we raise this also?
At any time.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what I might have known. Why should we pay somebody more than what we're charging somebody else?
I agree.
So just covering ours a little bit.
This contract came from the city of Minot and that's our the award coming. And this is what they use for the city of Minot. We checked out several other places that board prisoners and we think this is the most fair for everybody.
Just so long as it doesn't go. My question was in case it goes crazy and goes up, we can too.
Yeah.
And I feel comfortable with this.
Yes, I believe we can at any time.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just am glad to hear that you've kind of determined that that compensation for your staff and jailers to practice by, because I assume a day twenty-four hours. So if there's anything less than that, which is probably often, you're not getting paid.
That is also correct. We're not getting paid for, I would say seventy-five percent of the people that Grafton reads in. Yes. So I think this would make it a little more fair for everybody.
Any further discussion? That will call for vote, Amy.
Yes.
Yes, Kristin.
Yes.
Or so, yes.
Or have any questions?
Well, maybe you and Tanya want to give us an update on the jail?
Yeah. There's been some conversation with other counties after our last meeting and Cavalier County today told me that they would not be interested in participating in the needs assessment and that what they said they'd be willing to contract for three beds. And I believe that was a consensus with most of the counties that you talked to today, correct?
Well, so I tried to reach Pembina County after you and I had spoke. Knowing that most of them had this on, or some of them, I should say, had this on their agenda today. I had made it clear that we were very willing to be there as well and to, you know, go through things and to talk. And the Samuels group also offered the same, that they would gladly be on phone calls. So I offered that to everybody.
And nobody called.
Nobody wanted that. And that kind of worried me a little bit. I kind of was worried about, you know, Pembina County, I wasn't able to confirm this, but there's.
I talked to Sheriff Muyner and he was at the commission meeting. And he said that they would not be interested in helping us and did not want to participate in the needs assessment, but they would be willing to contract ten beds.
I spoke with the, so the other three counties that we had originally reached out to were Trail, Steel and Nelson. Nelson County kind of told me back in January that they are already in the LEC contract, you know, the Lake Region Law Prison Center. And so they felt like when they're already involved with one, they probably wouldn't step away from that, even though there's been, I think, some at times some frustration and things like that, but they felt like they're already too invested in that one. I understand that. Steel County's in the middle of an auditor changeover. And so there's been a lot of transition there. I've been in contact, tried to be in contact with the commission chair and I'm not even really getting much information back from them. I think there's two of the other bigger things in front of them right now to be discussing this. Trail County does seem interested. I ended up having a conversation today with the auditor and we walked through things a lot more, which I wish we had done before the meeting, honestly. They're looking at the contract, both Cavalier County and Trail County, it sounds like we're looking at the contract wrong. And I thought it goes to show when you sit down with them, how much better you understand it. Because I thought it was laid out pretty clearly. They were both looking at a wrong figure, twenty-five hundred dollars as part of the assessment study, and that's not what it is. And so her and I walked through it quite a bit more in depth. She's concerned that the sheriff is maybe not understanding it as well either. But right now, their commission has the idea, we'd like to forward with this. And she asked for the contract to be reviewed, so she gets them to their state's attorney for review. I'm a little bit not, I'm a little bit weary still that they're one hundred percent in because they didn't fully understand what they were looking at. And so she sounded like she was still going to forward it to the state's attorney, but I don't, I think we, there's going to require some more discussions there. And then she had questions that honestly, I feel like need to be, it's too early in the game, right? She had questions like, well, how does this work then? If we do this, are we going to be part owners of this facility? You know, and to me, that's still just so far out there. And I explained that there's probably going to be a joint powers agreement and that there is an agency or there's a group of counties, so I'm a southwest part of the state, they've done this, et cetera, et cetera. I kind of walked through all of that with her. But there's still a lot of questions, obviously. And we all have the same questions, right? So I don't think we have answers for them, is the hitch. But, and I also explained that the Samuels group has been great about answering all the questions. They, she shared with me that they've gone through this process three times in Trail County, trying to get any jail built, and it's been shot down by their voters three times. They went through all the work to get it to that point. And it got shot down three times. So that was a good opportunity for me to say, Samuels group has never lost a vote. Because they told us that, they've always, you know, so she's like, oh, so that kind of intrigued her. So I was trying to sell the point that this stage of the game, yes, it sounds, it feels like a lot of money to invest, but we feel that, I mean, my understanding is that the commission feels strongly that this is money really well invested and it's going to pay off and that they, you know, so hopefully, we got that through. But Trail does seem interested as of right now.
Mr. Chairman, do, do we feel Cavalier and Pembina have the same information? I mean, is it something where we think they have the information, they're saying that, or based off of what you're learning, you feeling maybe they don't?
I.
I think that's the frustrating part is Tanya and I have both reached out to both the auditor and the sheriff and said, call us during the meeting, we'll answer your questions, call the Samuels group. And they haven't called. Cavalier County had the same understanding of the contract that it would only be twenty-five hundred dollars to do the needs assessment.
So, but my concern, so there's that. I think there is maybe a lack of complete understanding. However, that being said, Cavalier County's opinion was that they didn't want to spend twenty-five hundred dollars. That was too much to them. They didn't feel like that they could invest that at this stage of the game, so.
They said, why would we do a needs assessment? We know we, we know we need three beds.
So they, I, I mean, yes, we could go back and try to make sure they fully understand the picture, but I don't know if it's going to get us anywhere, where they won't even spend twenty-five hundred.
They don't want to spend any.
They don't want to spend, and I really think, that's the impression I get from them. They don't want to put any money upfront.
Correct.
They just want to be able to say, yep, there's a facility close by, we know we can bring people there.
Are we going to guarantee them then?
Yeah.
Right, that's.
Well, I think that has to be part of the conversation on what happens if an entity doesn't participate in any of this and, but still wants beds. What, at what cost would that be?
Mr. Chairman, I think you would take care of the entities that are involved if they went over three or they were contracted for three or five. And then I would make sure that we get compensated because they didn't get in there, you're going to pay a little bit more. These entities stuck their neck out, we did all the work and everything, the groundwork, and we stuck her out and addressed it. Why should you think you could come in and have three at low price?
That's also been, we're going to have to figure out.
Yeah.
I agree. Yeah, I agree.
I mean, you've got to give credit to everybody that's moving forward and taking the chance. That's part of it. We're taking a chance. We don't know. I thought, you know, I thought this was going to be an agreement, we were all going to be together, but it seems like they're just riding our coattails and going to give us money when they need prisoners to be here. Then it's going to cost you a little more, I think.
Honestly, I think it would cost a lot more.
Well, how do we move forward in terms of?
If we look at this work, what we would have to pay for a bed, I don't think our hundred dollars a day, even if it's a hundred fifty, is going to cover that. I think we're talking a lot of money.
The auditor of Trail is concerned, was, this was her personal opinion, so this wasn't something that was discussed, you know, and shared at the commission level. She asked me point blank, so I had to tell her, what are the other counties doing? What have you heard from the other counties? And I had spoken with Ron, so I knew, you know, we both knew what Pembina and Cavalier were doing. So I told her. And she said, see, that's my concern is that she feels their share is only looking for that as well. That they only want that X number of beds and not. Well, that's what I told her. I said, you know, that's, who wouldn't? We were in that position, if we knew we had a facility that we could go to, we would too, right? Let's be honest.
We did try, yeah, multiple times.
But I. So we did try. And so I kind of shared with her that I, there's this consensus at the commission level and at the committee level here that we don't even know if this is something we can manage without other counties buying in upfront. They need to put some skin in the game upfront. And so I was, I shared all that with her.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So it doesn't sound like this is panning out very well with the other counties. What about the Grafton Police Department? Wherever consider them? I mean, don't we take in quite a few of their?
We do, but they get around they, they get around the fact that, that it was a state's attorney's opinion, the former state's attorney. Now Judge Wayland, her opinion that once they become a county prisoner, that we're responsible for that. And almost everybody that gets arrested comes with a county charge that comes to jail. So it was her opinion that we are responsible for that bill. So I don't, I don't think the city of Grafton is at all interested.
But yet they pay us to hold their prisoners.
Not much.
Okay.
It doesn't amount to much because, yeah.
They're, they're in.
But I have a question about, if, if we didn't, I'm sorry to interrupt. If we didn't have a local facility right here, you know, say we did, we were in a fortunate position of finding something nearby in Devil's Lake or Fieldsboro or whatever. And we decided to haul, what would Grafton do in that situation?
They'd do what they're doing, they were doing during COVID and PR almost everybody. To, it's, it is very, the municipal court, it has to be a big misdemeanor or less. So we're talking first DUI, driving them to suspension. Very few things are covered in municipal court. So almost everything more than the first DUI is a district charge. All the domestic violence is all, almost all the drug charges. Almost everything is, is a county charge. So I can't speak for them, but I don't know that there'd be a lot of interest.
I do know this in Devil's Lake, the city of Devil's Lake is a part of that LEC organization. They are one of their players. They had, I think, originally six, five counties in the city.
Yeah, true.
I don't think that's the same anymore. I think they've lost a couple along the way. But, and I don't know what level of involvement they have, but they are one of the they have a seat around that table. They have a member on the board and all that, so.
Same train of thought. I mean, Grafton's staying county town, so it's, they want, what do you look at it that way?
Mr. Chairman, you know, the, we are in a somewhat of a desperate place when you look at jails and these counties and where people are, the other counties as well. I don't know if the Samuels, Samuels group would be able to help. I feel like we're kind of in with them right now, but I'm even thinking, is there a place something that could be presented to them to say, you know, if you're in now, could you lock something in contract wise, rate wise, versus if you're not, this is kind of what we're looking at. And I, I don't know, I don't want to make it seem like it's a you better or else.
No.
But to be real with the reality of, are we going to be at two hundred a day? You know, I mean, even in these smaller communities that don't want to put forward twenty-five hundred, well, if we have to go to two hundred dollars a day or something for some of them, three beds a day, that doesn't take long to to add up for some smaller counties, but.
No, in the counties, I think as soon as we did something like that, we'd scare right out of it, don't you think?
But what would they do?
Well, well, somewhere else where it's cheaper.
I think, where? Would they go to Minot or Tharola or? I, I think it is, yeah, they, some might, yeah, I don't disagree with you, but there is limited bed space out there right now. And there's not a lot of places to go. That's the problem we're in.
I agree with Amy, but I'm just afraid they just back, totally are.
Well, and I don't want to approach it like that.
Yeah.
This way, but it would be, can we work together? And obviously, they have to be willing to talk. I wonder if we could have Samuels group look at it and see if they feel we could even recoup our costs. You know, if we were to rent a bed though, is it even worth our cost to put up these extra beds? Because I, I'm just looking at this thinking, there's no way we can make money on it. I mean, if, can we even recoup our costs on it?
That is a good question.
So I'm wondering if the Samuels group could maybe tell us that, because maybe this is a done deal, then if they're not interested, we're not interested. You know?
How do you staff it or get people and everything?
Right, you're looking at staffing. We're hitting our general mills on staffing already. The only way we were going to do it is probably with these other counties participating. So how do we hire additional staffing when we're already bumping up against our mills? If they're not going to put in money. Maybe we have to look at not participating either way. If they're not interested. But I'm just wondering if the Samuels group could tell us that, if they could give us an idea.
I think that's maybe part of the outcome of this study, though, unfortunately. You know, I feel like we have to finish this step maybe to get those answers. And when you, I was looking closely at the breakdown today on that chart. If I was like a Cavalier County, right, looking at the breakdown of the cost per county and what each county is getting. I kind of understand on one hand where they're coming from, because they feel like, we already know what it means. We don't even have a facility for you to look at. We don't even, you know, it's almost too robust for those counties that don't even have a facility. Trail and Cavalier, they don't even have facilities, you know, like so, and actually Steel and Nelson probably too, all four of those. I don't have any, right? I mean, Cavalier's the only one. And so I almost wonder if, and I, of course, Samuels group didn't, you know, they did their best. They could to try to put together something that we could apply universally, but each county's in such a unique situation that it does seem like a huge investment. If you don't have a facility even operable right now, one of those breakdowns, I remember, I was looking closely at the end today and I was like, yeah, that doesn't even apply. And it was like twenty-five hundred, I don't remember what it was, but you know, I could understand what they're saying.
If you want, if they only want three beds here, do we want to invest that kind of money?
Yeah, just to, just to get the ball rolling. You know, like, we already know what we want, we're just telling you. So I don't know. I mean, I almost think to get to that answer, I almost think that we have to see the study piece of it through.
Yeah.
And incorporate maybe some of the things that the other counties are telling us, you know, okay, we, we, you know, we would reserve or whatever, you'd have to, you'd have to work that through more. Ten beds for this place, three for that place. Yeah.
Great. And I was intending it as part of the study, I guess.
Sure, yeah, I was sure. If you meant right now, we go back now.
Yeah, no, no, I think it would have to be part of the study to see if it's feasible for us to put up additional beds to run down.
Yes, I understand, yes. And I, Jennifer from the Samuels group has been in contact with me a couple different times, wondering how things are going or where we're at with things. So she did send me another version of that contract that you signed today, just with the second signature page, or any of the other counties that are going to sign on it. So it's all on the same document. So I did send that to Trail County right now. And their state's attorney is going to review it. And I also offered for their state's attorney to visit with State Samuels, so.
Well, I guess they still got time to jump on, but I guess our position is move forward, isn't it?
As well, at this point.
Well, they kind of already made that decision, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
And, and Trail asked to, so there's the breakdown of the cost per county, that's sixteen thousand something. And then there's the other piece of it, twenty, twenty-one, right? And she asked how that would be split. And I asked that question, remember, in the meeting. And I think more or less based on kind of projected percentage of usage, right? So it wasn't necessarily we split it in half, or but you know, you think you're going to use seventy-five percent of it and I'm going to use twenty-five, then you break it up accordingly. So
Right, yeah.
Hopefully I answered that correctly. That's how I answered the question, so.
So how long will we give them to make that decision?
She was sending it to her state's attorney the next day, but she made it sound like their commission chose to move forward. I don't know if there's a motion, and she didn't really elaborate. So I can follow up with her by the end of the week, if you want me to, or give them a couple days for the state's attorney to review and see the year from then.
Do we have another jail committee scheduled?
Friday.
This Friday?
Yeah.
This Friday.
Yeah. So I can try to get an answer by then, if we, as to where they're at with it, I guess.
Sure. Any further questions on the jail? Tom, we'll move ahead with Tanya.
Okay, so I'm going to pass this pile of papers around. If you guys could just each take three, they're in order, so just take three and keep passing. We should have a a piece of paper that says county IT position or county IT research. And then I might have an extra one, so if you're missing a third one. And then it's just two pages of a draft job description with the other piece of it. So I tried to, I'll wait till you all, I guess, receive.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. So I did some general, I wasn't at the meeting where this got brought up. I did speak with Chrissy about this. I just tried to gather some general information for you to kind of get the conversation started, but I'd be looking for additional feedback, obviously, from you as a commission as well. Through the NDACO, you know, they have their survey platform. And so when I just do a quick search on there, it brings up nine counties that employ an IT person out of all of the counties. However, I don't think it's fully accurate because it doesn't always catch the ones that are combined. You know, so for example, I know, because I work closely with them, that, you know, Pembina County has an IT person. They're not on that list because they're combined with the nine-one-one and the GIS position. So there's probably some that are getting missed in this list when you pull up the IP, you know, category. But there's nine, some of these counties have more than one. They range, there's a couple of counties that were listed on there that have very, very part-time people ranging from literally one hour per week to ten hours per week for the part-time. And then there's, most of the rest of them are all full-time. The annual salaries range from about forty-five thousand for an IT technician up to, of course, a hundred and twenty for like, this is large counties now, understand. So I'm looking at you know, the whole gamut. You may recall that we have seven counties that we typically use for our compensation plan as our market. I pulled those seven counties in particular. Three of them have IT staff. Richland County is one of them. They have a full-time position that they call their IT coordinator, and it's also shared with their deputy auditor position. Barnes County has two full-time individuals, one's called the IT coordinator, one is the IT technician. And then Pembina County, as I just said, happens to have one person, she's full-time, who has, she wears a couple hats. She's the nine-one-one coordinator and the GIS coordinator. So the annual salaries for those positions, just those three range from fifty-seven thousand to eighty-six thousand in those three counties. I just added some thoughts kind of at the bottom. We have staff, of course, already that perform IT-related things, right? Chris has, you know, she's kind of our main point of contact for everything to do with ITV at the state. So she's dealing with network tech questions and that kind of thing. Brent's office, of course, has been sort of the point of contact for all the phone system maintenance and website maintenance, all of that. We have not done any sort of compensation, right, for any of those IT-related tasks. We've never added anything to their, their salaries, nothing of the sort. I did include, this is a draft, a draft job description. I, as I was making copies, I realized that I forgot to remove the word assistant at the top, so that was, it's not supposed to say assistant. I was pulling from several drafts to put together a draft for you. This is very much draft form. It would require a lot of fine tuning and it would require feedback from any other, many, all the other department heads. I would want to hear from them. I think that I'm glad you're here, Ed, because GIS is something that's oftentimes sort of incorporated with IT stuff. I think that's, some of that is already happening in his office. And I would want to have a conversation with him to know, you know, the level of IT or GIS work that he's performing and what's happening in his office, and if it's something that would need to be recruited, stand on it, or, you know, we just, I think there's a lot more discussion, I guess. Bottom line is, there's a lot more discussion that we need to have, I think, in order to explore this concept thoroughly. The new software I sat in on the training for just a little bit today, until it just was like way over my head and I decided to step out. It was all on like the accounting that, you know, general ledger software and all that, and I bowed out. But just listening to that first hour, hour and a half of the training, I can see where an IT person, there's some hacks that that IT person would wear with regards to a software system like that. There was like administrator type functions and what was the global user, they called it, I think. Where that person is in charge of, you know, maintaining, who gets access to what, and just, you know, overseeing the whole software system. But right now, Chris's office, I think, ended up taking a lot of those roles. Ed has some of those roles for now, which works fine, because they are the ones that are utilizing the system the most anyway. They're the, you know, they're in the middle of it every day. So I could see if you ever explored that further, where we could put some of that onto the IT person. But it's not like that software that we did today, that we done all today. And I, maybe you bought into different parts of it later on. But it was very specific to just these couple offices. You know, it wasn't something that everybody in the county is going to utilize. It was very specific to just, you know, auditor's office, treasurer's office primarily. I mean, not even It was very specific to just, you know, auditor's office, treasurer's office primarily, I mean, not even. I was texting Chris in the middle, I'm like, don't we need this person and this person and no, they don't even use that, you know, so, um. I can see a little bit of that fitting into the IT role, but yet it's very specific to their offices as well. So I, it makes sense that they would be administrators of it too, so I, it's not all, um. You know, it's not like a, oh, we have to have an IT person to oversee that, I don't see it that way, I guess, personally, um. I think that if you were going to explore it, there there are. Probably a lot more conversations, I guess, is what I would encourage as to what all would be on this person's plate. You have several tasks that are already being performed by other people in the county. And how would that, how would those tasks intersect with this role?
Mr. Chairman, um, I was, I did one of the county. Webinar things and something that they talked about and they brought up other commissioners was specifically personal. Combined with your role, like commissioner-wise, and even just having your personal intersect with that. Um, computers at meetings and, you know, just from, so that made me think even even just the overseeing for advice to us on. You know, this is how I proceed or I would separate this, um, from that perspective, I guess, I think of websites. Meetings, there being a person, I also agree for our county, I I don't think we need a full-time. Definitely, but but it would be nice to find a good mix that. Could be incorporated in there that, so we would have a person, you know, I mean, I, I feel like it it. Happens a lot in agencies where it's like a plate is full and then something gets added without really recognition of what they're doing. And I know Aunt Jill even commented before she left, she said, I hope. That you guys look at compensating someone for this because it is a lot more and especially if we have evening meetings. To ask someone to stay or be on call or come in, I I know that's temporary, but, um. I I think it's something we need to look at, I just don't know that we have the the path to get.
Mr. Chairman, yeah. You all know I've been a big advocate of a county administrator. I think it's time when you start looking at something like that, you look at this and throw that in there too, and an IT person. I mean, you you just look at all the things that's happening here and involving in and stuff and I'm not saying we move forward. But I think at budget time and stuff, we really gotta sit down and and see our needs. And I think there's a lot of times since I've been here that administrator would have probably saved us money and trouble. Now you got an IT person again, you know, I talked to Mike over at the school, I didn't get back to him, the one that was. Summer intern with Angel, seemed like maybe interest to help us in the short run and I didn't wanna go further it until we talked about this. But I I really do, I think we're coming up to budget time again and. I I don't know, I I, we've kicked this administrator, either we do it and we don't and and if we decide to do the administrator, I think this is the time to do an IT and. Have the qualification qualifications in there if we hire somebody that they can help us to become. You know. So I just, my, I I mean, wow, just everything, it just seemed like it's boiling and and we're not smart enough, I'm not smart enough and. And I don't expect all our help to be up on all this stuff and it seems like every day and every age. We're getting more involved in computers and technology and.
There has to be some compensation for it too.
Yeah, and that's why I I think moving forward, we don't have to jump into it, but if you could do this administrator work that in there, you know, what a great time to do it. And maybe that's not the answer, I don't know, but I I I'm just saying, maybe it's time we look at something like that or something, I don't know.
Chris.
Well, I was just gonna say that with our pay plan, we worked. And took all that out, you don't get extra compensation for this, this and this, now you're talking about bringing it back, I just wanna put that out there.
Yeah, I, another thing that comes to mind when you mentioned that, you know, we maybe don't, there may be not a feeling that we need full-time. I have seen agencies and I'm just thinking out loud right now, right, I have seen agencies contract on a part-time as-needed basis with a local IT professional. Um, that maybe that's something you need to explore too, if that's something that if there really is such a, you know, if it's becoming a, a more um, urgent need. I don't know.
That's a good idea, I'm just sort of putting them on a payroll contract with somebody.
Well, and and sometimes that's nice because it's as needed, you know, maybe you, maybe you're going through.
Yeah, right, right.
Um, while you're going through a software change where maybe you wanna be able to bounce some 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 things off of somebody, um. But maybe there's quieter seasons and in that respect, they wouldn't have all of the same duties, obviously, as an in-house person. Cause you're not gonna make a contractor that an admin for your software system or things like that, but, um. And define the user roles like we were talking about today, but that's something that maybe you can just ponder.
I I just had some concerns, I'm not against an IT person, I certainly don't think we need a full-time. I like the idea of possibly contracting better or maybe we are hiring some new employees, we get somebody that this comes easy to. Um, however, some of the things Angel was listing concern me. That we need an IT person for this, to set up a Zoom meeting. I think that should almost be expected of department heads now, I mean, some training on setting up a Zoom meeting, I. I believe everybody should be able to set up a Zoom meeting, yeah, there's gonna be some training involved. But I don't think that's something you hire an IT person for, changing or ordering a light bulb for, was it a projector? We don't need an IT person for that. Um, a website coordinator, yes, that that I could see that you need somebody maybe to head that up, but. I think she was naming some things that I guess I was sitting there going, gosh, I think that's kind of part of, part of an employee's job nowadays. Um, Zoom meetings aren't, I'm not gonna say I know how to do them, but I don't think they're that difficult, um. So I wanna be careful, so we're not going down this road of, oh, gosh, we need a. We need a, not even a full-time person, but we need a part-time person, I don't even feel that our needs there truly for a part-time person. I think it is more of a contracting or someone in that gets hired and I I do feel in some of the positions that we're backfilling. If we got, I'm gonna be honest, but some of these people, this would be nothing for, I mean, it'd be really easy for some employees that get hired, but you just have to find the right employee. Um, I think we need to explore all avenues before we just. Go down the rabbit hole of we need an IT person and we're gonna pay this much money and where is the money gonna come from? Because is that a general fund, is that one where we're getting up to sixty mils, is it gonna have to come under that same fund?
Technology is county general.
Yeah, so we're we're at our limit there, so where do we think this money is gonna come from, you know?
And I think department heads that is really a good point too, I I certainly would wanna hear from them on terms of what their needs are because. Ed, you know, they may say we don't need anything beyond, we can handle this. So I, my only concern is, and and maybe you have an idea, is, you know, when you talk about contracting. Ooh, you know, if if you can find, um.
Right, yeah, yeah.
If they're gonna be busy and available to us.
Well, just who and who, like, are there people out there that do this, and we use someone. Out of Grand Forks, but that is for my clinic where I work, um, but that hasn't been super. Consistent, it, there's been kind of these, oh, we're not doing it now, we are, so.
Right.
I definitely am leaning towards that would be a smarter move for us, I just think it'd be nice for us to have someone and I personally think that. A conversation continuing with Mike could be a good option, affordable option for us.
When I talked to him and stuff and I told him, I said, we don't really need full-time or whatever, and I said, part-time, and I said, maybe just. Figure out a per-hour deal, so if we need her two hours this week and ten hours next week. And he seemed to think he was gonna talk to her and I I just figured I saw this and I wasn't gonna jump into it, but maybe I'll touch base with him and see. She's, it sounded like she'd be interested and she apparently was pretty good in what I what I got out of it. I don't know what else she did, she worked with Angel and Angel seemed to like her, so I I just thought, you know, for the time being, if we need some help, maybe on a. I don't know what you pay her per hour or what the billing rate is, but you know, if you, if we need her for two hours, at least come in and help and. I don't. At least till we decide what we really wanna do.
There's a, I know there's one in the Cavalier area that does this sort of work, he works with businesses, I don't know if he works. Um, I don't know what business is, I just know that I've used him myself, um. But I know he's talked about, you know, oh, I have to go to this business today or that business today, I think he's done a lot of work with businesses in that area, um.
The scary part, I think of it like a computer. Either things go wrong and I've taken it to somebody and they didn't fix anything and sent me three bills. Next time I take it to him, he settles it right away, how do you know how good that person is, then you sign the contract with him or something, you're stuck. I don't know.
We used to have Jack Mahalich.
Yeah, yeah, Jack was good, but he don't do it much anymore.
Yeah, and then we had MRG, they had a technician. Center body here and he took area counties. Um, I don't know why they, they pulled him, I haven't had anyone here since.
No, they have, do they still have remote technicians, I don't know if they even do that anymore.
I don't think they're.
I do, I think they might have gotten rid of that, like, business model, I guess, I don't think they have them. Cause they used to have them spread across the state a little bit, I think.
Sure, it's nice, so.
Hey, yeah, for sure. Yeah.
And it is nice to have that person to go to where, yeah, maybe maybe you can set up Zoom, but ooh, now we have a problem.
Right, yeah.
But it's nice to have that go-to person that has the next level of knowledge.
Yeah.
Um. Just. How many hours, you know?
Well, I maybe feel like the next step for Tanya would be to just connect with all the department heads and see what they feel the needs for would be. You know, are there ones beyond what we've declared? And that might give us a better sense of of how much time that we need to, um, Robert Height, he, I don't know if he's who you're thinking of.
No, but I've heard of that name, no, he's gonna, no, um. Oh, I'm gonna drop like now, Shane, Shane Gambler or something, I can't, I don't remember his last name. I should know, cause he's repaired two, I had two different arteries crashed, he repaired them, wore a mangle for them and. Saved everything and he was, he's been really good to work with personally, but, um, I think it's Shane Gambler, I think is his last name. But I've heard of that Robert Height, there was another one also, Cavalier that actually lived right across the corner from the courthouse there. I don't know, he's doing very much anymore, but, um.
Well, maybe we determine what our needs are and put it out in the paper and see who's interested.
You want me to touch base with Mike and see where.
Who is he talking about already?
She was the summer intern with Angel.
Yes, I just.
I was a student, okay.
Yeah, student deal.
And would that be an issue, would that be an issue?
Uh, I guess take the work, probably not, but that would be something I need to hear, I I guess, I didn't realize it's high school students.
And maybe she not in, he just thought she would be and he would, I'm just listening to Mike, he said she went very good and like doing this, so.
Sure.
Maybe I'll just touch base with him and see, maybe, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I'll keep it, I'll touch you, Tanya, just to see.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not saying we need to go to her or anything else, but it just seems like if we can get somebody to help us in for a while.
I'll do some checking with the. Department heads and see what the needs are, this, like I said, is an extremely rough draft, I think it would look, yeah.
Much different.
Yeah, and I don't even know, I don't, if we were to pursue the contract portion of it. Um, we wouldn't have a job description per se, right, we would have like a needs and services we're looking for type, it would be, it would look different, I guess, um, so.
Does this mean we're sort of past the old DOS for dummies?
Well, sure.
Remember that? You didn't know that, that DOS for dummies, it was sort of a thing that helped you.
Yes.
Well, we've still got two positions that we're looking for up here, one, you got one, Larry?
Yes, Deputy Deputy Tax Secretary.
Yes.
All right, do you think further for Tanya?
Just remember, I knew you were there.
I'm concerned here, I'm gonna make sure it doesn't go off into other papers, thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Take a five minute break.
My dad brought me home peanuts from Mexico.
Your dad brought you a snack? Oh.
She just was, I don't know if she was. Yeah, she, she didn't do that.
Maybe she took one, it didn't really eat her too.
No, no, no snacks are not all.
And is it, is the word a food you hired, if we needed that.
April Vaughn, she was our actual, he gave it Vaughn, who was our federal service officer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and then Chris said to say.
They knew, you know, to the area?
Yeah, like for two issues, they give her a non, what's the again?
Good.
All right.
And there's, there's.
I think I tried myself the mess. I think the Adam I did, yeah, yeah. We've got a lot, I don't even think what, that's not, all of, yeah, all of the shares of our employees, a lot of them are from here, so.
Adam?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty much the one end of federal to the other.
Okay, yeah, and it's a lot, I'm a wise.
Everyone, very old.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
I thought they, they like, I I feel a go from these fingers, they like the more remote the better.
It's a real true wolf.
I know, I.
Lot of road that were.
Oh, why is over here?
What's that?
The veteran service officer's wife, that's.
Oh, can you see from here down? That's a John, you get, you get up over there, they don't have pressure, it's all, all, it turns to half. A little whisper like this and it's a bowl.
We went to Stephen last night, Ernie, there's no better than that.
Oh, yeah, there's no show, we don't tell you.
Oh, that would have been a fun drive, he said.
You know, you can pick up right away when you're in trouble, when you're looking, you can see for four miles and you don't see a tree.
I was having a damn absorbs.
Yeah. Did you have basketball there?
Seventeen East to town, yeah, that's, that's horrible, almost all.
Yeah.
Almost like when you get past Donaldson, Minnesota, there, everything goes there. And the ditches are always full of dirt, yep.
Gonna need better.
What's that?
She said I have.
Oh, my God.
I think it's a G, wow. Yeah, there's a whole other part of the alphabet left.
I was gonna say, he's getting serious about his ABCs. There is an evaluation, I told him to quit asking for money and make it shorter. Don't be able to tell how well I listened to that.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, we'll call a meeting back to order. Jason.
Good evening, uh, first one I have for you, this evening is just a quick one. Um, the first two pages that I submitted to you is just the list of projects that the North Platte DOT is looking at. Forming the next few years from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty five. They'll be doing a little bit of work in the county, but most of it is around us, so it just kind of lets us know where we're at for. Future projects where we know we're gonna have contractors in the area or we can try it in time, 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 same timeframes. The second part is with the last round of bridges that we put in for funding for. We were told we need to have a special meeting in regards to having the sort of bridge renovation. For the bridge that is a mile north and a mile and a half east of NASH. This bridge structurally is not in horrible shape, we did have to close it last year because of the bridge cap being. This project is too big for our staff and our equipment to take care of, um, from talking with Ryan on it, so. We put that in as part of this to have it restored. Um, with this meeting, we just need to get some public input, it will be held on March tenth at ten AM in the Harmer's Room. I don't expect it to be a long meeting, but it's just something we have to have for the input phase from the DOT to. State who we've talked to and if the people are against it, I don't feel like anybody will be against the project. But it'll just give us another access for people that didn't have one this last year when during the flood off of six, when number six was underwater between NASH and their residences. So it kind of helps them get another access way and exit out of their homes. So that's that one. The next item that I have is for two district claimers being built from crested ironworks. We've kind of given them some rough plans. We've kind of given them some rough plans for some things what we are looking at, what these reclaimers would allow us to do is. Speed up our process in the spring, or if we had floods like this last year, where we can move these between mortar graders. Go reclaim our gravel that's been pushed off over the winter, um, for snowmobile or storm removal processes or just general traffic going down. Get some of that gravel back up and make us more efficient. With these on the mortar graders, they can actually make a pass with the reclamer and the blade, you get it done in one pass. Right now, what we're doing is we have one reclamer that we've put behind our tractor. That's the east, we run that and that goes across as many roads as we can. As the spring grows and the grass grows, we don't get to reclaim as much of the gravel, so this would speed up our process by quite a bit. So with this, I was looking for permission to go into a contract with Crease and Ironworks to. For thirty six thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars to build two district claimers for the county. We would have money that can make available out of, um, our gravel fund portion and I can replace that, this thirty six thousand dollars. Out of the hospital fifteen oh five, I can't use hospital fifteen oh five for the actual equipment, but I could make that swap between funds. So looking for a motion on that, or this is a piece or for two? Maybe for two of them, two, for two, maybe thirty six thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars. Go ahead.
So you said we currently do have a reclamer?
We have one that we put behind a tractor.
Okay.
So we wait for the tractor to go through, the mortar grader follows them through, so we can blade that out, so you get the grasses and the dirt that does come with the gravel and falls through. That we have one.
I'm missing the point, if we already have one, why do we need two more?
Because there's a lot, we don't get covered the entire county with the one. Our lease tractors at two hundred fifty hours, we have two lease tractors and one of them is already over its lease hours from mowing last year. And the snow removal we've done this year. So we're running out of hours on the tractor, so we, we run out of hours on the southern tractor before we get our next two that are on leases. There's roads that won't be covered with the reclamer, this will just speed up our whole process.
Are, have we ever done this before behind the mortar grader? There's a goal in front?
It goes in the front.
Front, have we ever done this before? We've never tried this, are we sure this is in order?
Yes, first, just use.
Many counties usually.
Many counties have it. Yeah.
The thing is, you're doing it on one trip and saving time.
Right, so they're not waiting on it?
On those tractors, when we go over the hours, do we pay a higher rate?
Yes.
Like, how much is a jump?
Uh, it is time and a half, over a certain number of hours and then after that they get you. So.
Let me tell you, over a lease on something, they get you.
Right. Yeah.
Can I ask, have you, have you talked to your staff about this? How did they feel about this?
They don't know. They're, they would appreciate having, because they feel like it'll make them more efficient to get through things a little bit faster. Those, one of the problems that some of the guys have with mortar graders is that when they're waiting for the reclamer to come on the, behind the tractor. That their grass is growing and then it gets to be a lot more sod that they're having to deal with, or if you get, before the grass grows up, you don't have as many of an issue. It makes it easier to work up, don't have the, as many issues.
I, I see the biggest thing, the safety issue is that sod, when it gets to be grassy and then you bring that dirt up, then you get a rain, look what you got.
Right.
If you get up to a quicker, is there a way we could try one? Maybe this year, this year and.
We could, we could try.
You know.
Yeah.
See if it works better than the tractor, and I, I know we're getting hours on it, but.
We could start with one. I don't know what the price would be for it, because this one is for two, because they have the engineering that worked in with it, they said the. Per price, if we were to buy a third one and blow it down, a thousand dollars per, but. I, I have to ask Bernie on that one.
I'm concerned about the transferring of money from house bill.
So a transfer of funds.
Okay, just so the money's being used appropriately, so we don't get our hands slapped from state auditors.
It's just. Yes. Yes. No money either, it's a dumb for hospital fifteen oh five at all.
You just grab up the, yeah, I, I get what you're, you're sliding it, not using it.
Right.
I don't know, do we need to?
I don't know.
I.
Depends on what's for.
Yeah, well, that's.
I'd like to see what the price of one would be before we ask on it.
I agree.
Yep.
Look and see what the price of one is.
I will ask Bernie on that.
Tell Bernie to give us a good county deal.
When that comes to heavy later. Johnson Controls, after taking a look at the plans for the building, um, working for our memorandum of understanding, coming up with estimates on. What it would cost to. Replace and renovate our boiler system and air conditioning system.
I fell out of the chair the other day when you told me.
Yes. The, the boiler and boiler system is basically at its end of life cycle. The water, air conditioning system we have, there are gate valves and things that no plumber is willing to replace, it's basically an old system, um. Some of the gate valves I have to use, when we open them this spring, I have to use a potato pitchfork to do it. And then just pray they don't break anything off, if I break one. We're going to flood stuff. But possibly I'll put it onto the basement floor, um, if it breaks, it will take out the boiler. It's not an if, it is a when, because there's not enough drains to take care of the water that will be coming out through it. To replace everything, uh, you could go through and do it in stages for a project. My problem with that is you're basically giving, going through walls and doing piping for the systems. And having to do it two different times. Part of this process also is looking at taking care of ADA concerns. I asked them to go back and take a look at the ADA concerns, but I didn't feel like we needed to do as much for the ADA process as they were doing. Being this is a historic building, I do not feel if we need to make ADA on every floor, as long as we're making accommodations on the basement floor, we should be fine. I don't see any reason why we couldn't, also with all the bathrooms that we have. Depending on how we change our door frames, we do meet the rotation specs for ADA's. We just would have to take all the partitions and make it a single use for the men's. And it's already, so we'll just take out the partition and be able to lock the door behind you. So you wouldn't have to have that, that portion. And we make ADA as far as I'm concerned, they're in touch with architects about it. They also forgot to take into consideration that their conditioning for the courthouse takes care of the admin building as well. So we went over there and take a look at some of that as well, so they could go back and take another look at what we would have to do to get air conditioning to that. Right now, we're looking at a tag of five point five million dollars to renovate this one.
Yeah. Five and a half million.
Five and a half million.
Let's just hear him cool.
That's heating and cooling. And so the ADA, which hopefully we can get taken down, but that's just heating and cooling of this building. Prices that they have on things has gone through the roof, you couldn't believe what the price tag was when John and I spoke about it last week. When you told me the number, when I saw the number, I. Well choked. So I'm not sure where we go from here on this one, honestly. The next step from Johnson Control's standpoint, from taking a look at different things and going through some more stuff. Trying to rearrange things for the ADA control, ADA bathrooms and stuff, to see if they can do for reducing numbers. After this point, we're pretty much to, do you move forward with hiring somebody to come up with that actual plans? Or are we just putting everything on hold and taking the can down the road again? Um, I don't know what to do on this one. Everybody's got the same look.
So just said, we need to tie right my bow. What would you do?
Well, there's, you could add multiple options, five and a half million, right now we're looking, if you put into this building, and there's a lot of people in the community that. Are attached to this building and wanna see it as part of the history and as part of the building, it's on an historic register. If you walk away from it, what can you do with it? I understand that aspect. I also understand that if we're looking at a new jail and a new sheriff's office, the five and a half million dollars on to there. There's an extra big price tag for things, but putting everybody in one location. What's her, what's the condition on the rest of the building, the roof? Well, and I know that we have, I've been on the roof, I don't see any concerns at the moment, to me. Uh, I do know that in the past, this roof has leaked, there's evidence of it right here in the room, we have. Evidence that this building has had structural shifts in the past with cracks to the building. I, without hiring somebody to go and do some crazy structural, I don't, I don't know, I don't see anything that's saying it's gonna fail anytime soon. Structurally. But I, I don't know, I have been looking at different tracks around the building, seeing, I haven't seen anything move in the year that I've been here. But I can't answer that one.
Like everything else, it's getting old and age.
Five and a half million.
So, is it even possible to just ditch this boiler system and go with a whole new system?
This would be ditching basically the boiler system, going with a newer system, and it would end up actually having to take. Room out of different areas, we'd have to try and find them, or we could basically bring heating systems into areas and zone it out, so. We bring one controller into like the auditor's office, try and find some small corner, I don't even know the size of the corners that we'd be looking at at this point. Um, every floor would have to have one to two of these, depending on where you're at, and so you're. Been a loser inside different places. For the ADA of the, of the basement floor, basically what we'd be looking at is having to get rid of the finding room. To have two of men's and women's ADA bathrooms that would have the services for two stalls. And then that wall would have to be ripped off, renovated to expand the men's, expand the women's, put the women's over there. Then it, it's nothing, nothing that from the first hand sketches I saw that was going to be. A nice gentle process, where we're not gonna have a lot of dust, going through those processes and going through the rooms, trying to schedule where you're at for the court. Cause they're gonna have to hammer drill through walls, and with the way this is, they're, they have concerns about hammer drilling through the building just because of. How it's made and the materials that are made, with, with concrete and the steel and terrazzo tile and. Going through those things, making sure you get the right contractor that doesn't totally fudge everything up, it's gonna be another concern too.
But this is still going with another boiler system, correct?
It's a similar boiler, it's not as much of a boiler system, but it is a similar to the yes. It is another one, it's just.
So I mean, maybe it's a dumb question, do we have to go with a boiler, can it, I mean, what about just regular propane produce? And air, I mean, is that not a possibility?
Your expenses would be extremely high.
We would have to do it going that route, I'm not sure how preventing with this sort of standard. System, how that would work with ventilations and changing on your ceilings and getting duct cords through. And this is what they determined with, from Johnson Controls, they determined probably be the easiest. Process to get us through to get us to the next step. The boiler system they have now is only an eighty percent efficiency, the newer ones would be in the nineties, ninety five percent. So with the new system that they're talking, we would gain efficiencies. We would definitely gain more control from the air conditioning aspect than we have now, where it's seen your on, right, soft. Little bit more control where eating, a little bit more control over eating systems from what we have now. But. And. Said, I'm kind of at a loss with this one.
I think it's something that we gotta just sit on for a while and think about it, or do we go, I mean, this is, that's, that's a huge. But yet, it's, what do we do?
I agree.
Most hard no building can be a jail, but a courthouse.
Always a number, but that's not much.
I know.
I, if you go to a nineteen, a building's built nineteen seventy five, I don't know if there's enough space in there to. Put the courtroom in it and everything else, is it a possibility? Sure, I guess.
But you're looking at probably the same issue we got kicking it down the road, same thing.
I, I don't know what, I don't know what their heating cooling system is like over there, I don't know what the roof is like there, so. Are you, are you losing one to gain another issue? I, I don't know.
Maybe they can do when they do the study. You know, they're gonna look at that, maybe we'll get some answers out of that. And the jail deal, you know, how good is it or?
Right, they'd be able to tell us.
Yeah.
Something on that building, maybe do a valuation, sure.
Five point five is high, but to think about building onto our jail, that probably is nothing. And when you think of if we needed to, to add this and everything else on, that's gonna be a lot more.
Right.
So, but just so that that five point five would get us efficiency for a long term.
If you read the final page there, it says this budget is only a guide.
Right.
Until we determine the actual precinct.
Yes.
Could go up, could go down.
Oh, no.
With everything going up, you know.
This budget is four point eight to five and a half.
Yeah.
So this is only a guy, so this is a.
That's why I brought the five point five up, you were the top end number.
And we've still got sewer system to deal with.
Yes. Yeah, the sewer gas now in the basement is getting worse, so we have to do something about it sooner than later.
Let's talk about something else.
Yeah, well, it's something we gotta think about.
Oh, yeah, that's why I said it's, yeah.
It's a whole big input to what they want to see, I guess, it's.
That's understandable.
Yeah.
Well, that, move on to some good news. Uh, we had three bidders for, um, last week for bids on our highway nineteen CO project for chip and seal. The lowest bid came in from Morris CO Co. at five hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventy nine dollars and eighty four cents, that came in underneath engineers' estimates. The range of pricing in there was really good, we saw good competition. I would like to ask for permission for, um, a motion for me to sign a notice of award, to award this project to. Uh, Morris CO Co. and get K L J working towards putting the contract together for this project.
How much was it, Jason?
Five hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventy nine dollars and eighty four cents. I'm not in the.
Do you have any idea what it cost us as a county when we did our own?
It's pretty much gonna be the exact same thing as this is, uh, we're gonna have our labor, our materials, which is gonna be. Basically, there's only, or their, their time for their mobilization, we're gonna take people off of our projects to do it. Regardless if they're doing it or we're doing it, we're still paying for the same water rock, the same amount of oil, they get a better price on the oils than what we would have gotten. Because they just go through so much more. With us doing it, we don't have a storage container to bring in a tanker to have sit and wait. Uh, we've always had to have our distributor there, plus their stuff to go and do things, our staff have told me that we do a lot of waiting. When we're doing our chip seals, guys standing around waiting for the oil to come, one year apparently the oil didn't get here until extremely late at night, so they're out chip sealing in the dark. Or that gives me safety concerns for us doing it. I don't see how those type of things were in it, and this project also would have the painting in it, which we would have to contract somebody else to do the painting for it as well afterwards.
When they did fifteen in the Voskwa, I call it, they waited a long while there for that oil.
Once that oil was coming out of Canada too, and right now, some of those oils coming out of Canada, depending if you get a trucker, they can come across that. And last year, we had issues with salt coming from Canada, because we just, we couldn't get the, they just couldn't give us a truck driver for over one, so now we're gonna be getting our salt from somebody else. They just couldn't give us a truck driver for over one, so now we're gonna be getting our salt from somebody else. Christie?
I, I don't know if, so when you're doing highway nineteen.
Yeah.
The chip seal. So these annual reports that we used to get. Um, it looks like the last time Conny Road nineteen was done was in two thousand seventeen. Chip ceilings, that sounds correct?
Could be, yes.
Okay, and there it says Conny Road nineteen, Conny Road East to Highway, Conny Road Sixty East to Highway eighty-one.
Yeah.
That costs a hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred and thirty dollars.
Yeah.
And then highway for Conny Road nineteen, highway eighty-one to I twenty-nine. That costs a hundred and eleven thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars, so roughly two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
What was the price on the chips at that point in time or the oil?
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't have that, I'm just telling you what the materials, equipment and labor costs. I mean, I thought you said it would cost about the same and now you're telling us that the bid is for five hundred and fourteen thousand. I get that it's gone up in five years, I don't get you wrong, but I'm just, I'm wondering is it the same in mile to mile?
Yeah, it's same mile.
Are you sure that we couldn't do this cheaper if we were doing it ourselves, Jason?
Yeah, I think we would be in the same price range that we're doing ourselves. The other thing I know that we were doing ourselves is that our guys will be working on any bridge renovations or any, any other projects.
But from what I understand and visiting with some of your employees. They're in favor of doing themselves and they said they're probably pulled from other projects for five to six days.
It depends on who you're talking to, you get my staff. On, on that, some say they're pulled five to six days, some said are pulled for a lot more. Than that, they asked it all there for five to six days, but there's some of the guys that are pulled for actually doing the equipment process and getting the equipment ready, updating and doing those things too. And our chip spreader is not calibrated to the point where it's as easy for them to do that. And right now, the, from the bid that we got, their, the price on their oil is up a little bit more from the oil price that we paid last year. For those projects that we did do, doing patch suits and things like that. Now, it's, the, the oil is not cheap, the, the chips are forty-three dollars a ton on theirs. Our estimates were getting in at fifty dollars a ton, I won't know what those prices are yet. For, but they're forty-two dollars a ton for theirs, so just in. Just in the oil, it's, for this project is three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, eight hundred and eighty dollars in the engineer's estimate. That's just the oil. The Morris CO Co. its oil is at two dollars and eighty-seven cents a gallon, two hundred and fifty-five thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety cents just in oil. Just in the rock is eighty-eight thousand three hundred and two dollars, so just in their materials, with them doing that, just purchasing that stuff. You're already at over three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. That's just materials, that's not including any of our time, any of our labor, any of our trucks hauling, nothing. And that's basically what your, the price that you're doing.
Right, the, the materials from seventeen were about a hundred and ninety dollars, a little over a hundred and ninety dollars, almost double.
Socks up there, everything just seems like it's just going crazy.
Right. And along in that project line that you have, is there paint line in that one?
No.
So that would be something that was on top of that project that's in part of this.
I would expect that one, you might still with it.
Depending on the contractor you get, sometimes it can be, sometimes it's not, um, I haven't.
Ten grounds would make more, I mean, I don't know, but.
I don't know, and there's from their painter at, uh, about thirteen thousand from their painting and traffic controls. So. The mobilization is probably what we, we hit with, but. At the same point in time, we have to mobilize our stuff, it would be a hundred thousand, probably not, but. It's one of those things where our time for getting everything ready, shipping, getting all the oil set up for getting in here. Getting that scheduled, getting the chips and the rock brought in and it's all portion of that ten thousand that they have on it. And then they, well, all contractors with their mobilizations are covering their insurances and different things as well.
How many miles was this?
It is. Can't remember south of my head. So we're going from six to twenty-nine, so. Fourteen miles? Fifteen miles?
Where are these guys out of?
Morris, Minnesota. I've dealt with them multiple times with projects with, uh, parks and recreation. One of the time there, the owner used to be one of the guys on the crew sitting there working on. They come in, do really good work right here now for the project.
Oh, one good thing about it, it's, it's under the engineer's estimate.
Is it pretty stiff, I mean, just from a perspective of, you know, six years, is that for chip conceal just based on use, etc. I'm just thinking with it doubling essentially, there's no push out as far as prayer. Go back town again or baby through.
For chip seals, they top three to five years for highways. So we made six, so one reason why we're going with this one is the road was just milling overlay last year. So with that milling overlay, take most of the time a year after that, they want you to put this chip seal on, we push it a year. So we're to that timeframe on it as well. Uh, micro seals, they say you can get seven to nine years out of those, maybe up to ten depending on the traffic rules and everything else on it. But typically you're in that three to five year radius when they're lucky to see the, those, some people move up to seven. That's typical, most people shoot four, seven years, six to seven years on a chip seal.
Well, we need a motion to accept or deny the bid.
I don't know, I, I guess, I, I look at it both ways, I don't know if we could do it cheaper in a key solid calibrating, but. I think we've got a lot of problem with the bridges that we need to keep our crew on and do some maintenance there, after talking to the guys in the highway department and Jason. I, I, I think our bridges are so critical that we've gotta start looking at doing something to keep them open. We can't keep closing them and if we can extend one and get the roads up there and, and you know, last year with the flood, we didn't get to do that much. Uh, I had Jason, I talked to those guys and I said, I wanna list for something and sort of a. Uh, plan. Yeah, and I think, and they sort of all agreed when we were talking about it, that yeah, that we could do more on the bridges and maybe save some of this and go back to that. Hopefully, we're not spending a lot of time in FEMA this year.
So is it the same people, the bridge crew and the asphalt, or the chip crew and the bridge crew, is that the same guys?
They're all, no, yeah, all the guys from the bridge crew have pulled the red truck.
Right, and asphals.
For asphalt.
And that's why I said, if we could keep them on the bridge and do some of that, we're sort of. Minimizing that, hopefully some.
The other thing to remember is we don't go on the chip spreader anymore.
Well, it hasn't, the guy hasn't picked it up yet, right?
They're, they're there, but at the same point, then they've already paid for it and we've had the issues getting across the border with it.
By how long, yeah, how long a week, how long do you?
I spoke with them this last week and they're, uh, working on getting it out of here, so it's not in our spot, but yeah.
What I'm hearing is your employees want a chip seal, they wanna work on bridges, they want to do the work.
I'd like to know which guys you've spoken with that want to do chip seal, cause I can give you a few guys that don't wanna do chip seal. That are happy that they don't have to do it. So unless you're gonna talk to all of them, I, I have an, an idea of who you're speaking to that wants to do the chip seal and. That's one voice on that.
So I, I did talk to multiple people just so you know, but maybe there's a few more that I need to visit with.
I got the same indication from a couple of people I talked to too, but. Uh, you know, I don't know if they're aware of the costs anymore or not, but yeah. But I see her, he's pointed keeping on the, the bridge crew.
You know, they, when we had that meeting earlier and they wanted to do more and I says part of it was because of all this. The way it's changed with our, our, looking at the bridges and everything else, and I said further more, I said maybe you can blame us as commissioners, because I said. We only got so much budget and we didn't budget, we didn't know that it was gonna cost us this much for the bridge inspections. You know, so I'm hoping that we can do something more realistic budget, maybe look at it and move forward with it. To me, the bridges are more important than this. And, and I get it, maybe we could save some money, but if we can do two or three more bridges or four in the process and not pulling all the guys away from this. To go chip seal, I'm all in favor of fixing bridges.
But then it better be all working on bridges and, and not sitting and waiting for something to do.
And that's why I said we need a plan or something, yeah.
We've got some pretty talented employees in the highway department and we need to use them.
We need you.
Like I said, we're getting further behind on these bridges and.
And every time, we had a good discussion on our, our inspections. Which bridge was it that Ryan brought up and everything else, last year was okay and it really didn't get flooded. And we don't know if the guys missed it and all of a sudden now we've got problems with it. Well, the flood didn't do anything any year, yet we went from this to this. So what is, what are they doing? Is it a different crew that comes in to inspect it and finds something? We don't have that answer and I said, that's, that to me is really puzzling or bothersome to me. That all of a sudden that bridge last year was okay and we didn't have any flood troubles with it and everything else. And now this year we gotta do this, this and this to it and the tons went way down, over what cost it? When you didn't have any flood damage to your city. So are they consistent with their bridge inspections? I don't know. Cause why all of a sudden on the state we did it, we didn't have any trouble and now we got these guys doing it and all of a sudden we're finding. Stuff that just mind boggles me and even Ryan, I asked him a couple of times, and he said, I don't have an answer.
You have a good idea. For a hundred million dollar curried dog farm and everybody's getting their fingers in it.
Well, you just don't know and I, and I said, you know, it seems to me, being here as long as I've been and looked at it, and all of a sudden we got so much problem with the bridges. Then it's just cause we changed inspections, so did the ones that were with the state not do their job? Or are these guys being so picky, you know, which is it?
The ones with the state, you, you use more of a gray area. When you have a structural engineering company coming in to do it, the gray area is gone. Because if something were to happen like a highway thirty-five in Minneapolis, it's their name on the inspection. And it is, no matter which engineering firm you have, they're gonna look at it a little bit different than what the DOT did. Now, some of the bridges, uh, one of the bridges that Ryan was talking about, I honestly don't know. What was missed due to higher water last year than the one they can look at at this time, I don't understand it. The one that we have, uh, on eight, that's just south of number nine, a chunk of concrete that's missing after the flood. So it went from being at twelve fifteen ton to three. Have I seen semis going across it? Absolutely. Should they be? Absolutely, I don't know. But it doesn't matter what postings and the signs say.
You got some of these guys driving a hundred thousand dollar truck, hundred thousand pounds across at sixty miles an hour.
Well, I think of the four silver bridge, it was rated, I don't know how many ton and it is low and everything else, that, that truck empty was too heavy for the bridge and they took a hundred and ten thousand pound load over.
On, look at when all these bridges and, and the roads were built for that, I don't know too. And it's, you have Moncorros that were, that built them, they were built for Model Ts and they're built for single last of trucks.
Well, where we're at here.
I'll make a motion to remove Ed with this chip seal. Just cause I think we need to concentrate more on bridges and I'm gonna make sure we do.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Now we'll call for the vote, Amy.
Yes.
Bernie.
Yes.
Christie?
Well, I guess considering we aren't going to have a chip sealer anymore, it's leaking, correct?
Yes.
And we don't have a choice, but yes.
Now, well, yes, too, motion carried. How that chips you right now? When was that sold? When was that auctioned?
It's been sitting here for five months.
I was sold, isn't it normally like a ninety day period, removal period? So actually, he's exceeded that ninety days.
I told him that if they did injury, I'd be good, he'd be considered an investment property. Yes.
My opinion is, he's already exceeded it. For the wood, we have four hundred and fifty dollars, whatever it was for it. I think we should keep.
I agree, one hundred percent.
I don't know how to, I can go back and talk, we'd already talked about accepting it in the past for, for when it was sold. So I would have to talk to Kelly to see how would we have to give out of the agreement.
Is it, well, check on that contract when it was sold, if there is a ninety day removal period. If he's exceeded that, I think we should keep that chip seal.
Yeah, I will take a look.
Just in case. Uh, I wanna have that option available, if this doesn't work out, I wish. All right, Wash County nine and milling overlay, how many miles are we talking about there?
Fifteen, those from Edinburgh to eighteen.
Which is fifteen miles?
I believe it's fifteen miles. Six.
And it needs.
Eleven miles.
It's eleven miles.
So this bid came in at three million one hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-eight cents. Uh, winning bid was from male construction. The next closest was two hundred and thirty thousand dollars more from knife for materials. Uh, all the, most of these bids also came in underneath the engineering estimates. I think there's only one that was just close to it. They're all underneath it, one was like a within a thousand dollars.
Been a while since mail's been low for us. It's usually been nine figures out and all lately, mail isn't, it's nice to see them sharpen their pencils.
So with this and the highway nineteen, we have enough money, uh, the curried dog funds to cover them both. Which, with legislation that's out there. When possible, I've heard of them again, if they add a hundred and forty million dollars to the bucket before, we can get ours.
Is that always where we intended to take the funds from?
We put this off last year, didn't we?
Yes, yeah. Hopefully we get very enough.
Yeah.
Yeah. We still have the money for it.
Yeah, we, we didn't have anyone here in funding to take care of this last year. We're really gonna start on that. It'd be the summer completion by September thirtieth, we don't have anything on when they're gonna start yet, we don't have any contracts. So this would, for after we accept it, they can sign paperwork for a notice to award and we get those kind of.
All right.
I'll make a motion, we should have made this bid.
We have a motion for male construction, three million one hundred and thirty-seven dollars. One hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars for eleven miles. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Is this anything that we ever did upon our own or no, never, this is nothing that we could do, so.
We have nothing for doing that. I wouldn't even wanna come in here and tell you how much that. To have it sit there for a little bit of time to use it, we'd have to be hiring a lot more crew.
Any further discussion? Now we'll call for a vote, Christie. Bernie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carried.
Two hundred and eighty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars a mile. It's not these cars.
The last thing I have today is in regards to highway fifteen culvert crossing. Uh, meeting with Houston Engineering, Bernie, we discussed the culvert, the mechanics we're looking for, we need to kind of go with fifteen. In order to do this, we're gonna make sure everything is taken care of, we really need to do a hydraulic on it. Thompson's Cup that day, Zach from Antolos was gonna be one price, the price that we got back is an estimate. In front of you is seven thousand four hundred dollars, this is higher than what that was.
He estimated what, forty-four hundred or something?
Five hundred.
Forty-five? Well?
Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering, so this is kind of coming back from like the Chris Bearabee and the discussion at our last meeting. So from talking to Chris and he was essentially stating that those farmers paid for the hydraulic study. So why is the county paying, why isn't McCann paying for this if they're the ones interested in it?
I don't know why the farmers have paid for any hydraulics on these such projects in our right ways in the past. I can't answer for that. I can say that anytime we've looked at doing a culvert. From replacement, the hydraulics of the county has taken care since I've come on board.
Is this needed or is this what McCann wants?
Well, you know, I got mixed emotions here and everything and it's after the fact, but. You know, it's it's something that, yeah, it's a convenience and then help with McCann's and everything. Maybe we should look at them and say, if you wanna do it, you pay for it. The other guys did, you know, and you weren't here at the time, Jason.
Right.
And that was all done, hurry up, they didn't run it, I mean, the water board still mattered, it was never a drain.
Right. And McCann's paid twenty thousand dollars out of that last time.
Yeah, but they they could have had a probably a chance to add this and it never was at that time. So this is an added deal, so I don't know, I got mixed emotions, but I feel they should at least absorb some of the pie. It's not all of it.
If we do not do this, what, I mean, is there a detriment to the county?
Worst worst thing in the county to happen is if the water sits there by our road longer. And that's about the most negative you'd have, but it sits there long enough until everything opens and goes anyhow.
I don't see it in.
No.
A huge detriment to the county or benefit.
Cause once everything opens up, it's well drained and ditch nice, it disappears, it's normal spots already in the hills.
Which was taking care of the last or when they did.
Well, pretty much, those guys, you know, say what you want, they spent a lot of money and did a great job.
So aren't we opening the county rooms by paying for a study for one? And I mean, isn't everybody gonna wanna study then and to make my drainage more convenient?
Whenever you replace any culvert, we have to do a study. Adding adding one is another time where you have to have one, so.
I think I would ask McCanns if they're willing to create one on myself, just because of circumstances, they have accounts and they didn't go through. The twenty thousand they initially paid for, they got done. And I mean, I've been on both sides of the story, I lived there and everything else, see, one guy says this and one guy says that, the two stories don't match. So, you know, it's, it it goes back to a bad feeling way back when Sharon did it and Ludnick's were involved. I mean, this, this wasn't done, obviously it the right way, I think.
So what's the responsibility that county of us deal?
Not the county, is it?
None.
Well, I don't think we should do it.
If they wanna do it, I'd say that you pay for it, do the studying.
Yep.
Like I said, we're getting a lot of heat, the other ones, you know, the other ones paid and then you're here to, well, how come you're doing it for them? I don't like, I don't like that when I get that question to me.
If there was a a deterrent for the county, I mean, if we could right have some feedback to say this is why we're doing it. But just to say we do that and and have that from before, I just, and I, and McCanns were involved, just not. Well, I mean, it was a different McCann that was involved in this conversations from before.
The the thing about this is, I always look at if it's affecting somebody or emergency situations or somebody giving it up, we really don't have that. And and it's, it's, I don't wanna call it convenience, it's just water going maybe quicker after a time or whatever, but it's definitely gonna go anyhow.
It's the same water no matter where.
Yeah, it's just going in a different direction.
Same water, whether it's Chris Burry, whether it's McCann, whether it's anybody else, it's the same water. You're right.
And it's gonna wind up in the same place.
Same spot.
Yeah, I would say, see what they wanna do, if they wanna buck up.
Who paid for the study?
The first one was paid by Chris Burry, um, Brown Arla, McCanns.
Brad Narla.
The whole project was sixty thousand, I'm probably gonna miss somebody out of that, but McCanns paid about twenty thousand dollars or something.
I wonder if Miller's or none of that too. Cause they gained on the drainage and all that.
I'm not, I'm not sure. I can't, I can't remember all the names on it.
This was all designed as it had reached west of my, west and north of my place. When that water wouldn't go to the Cooley divestment, it had reached and Yonkers never really did anything and the water all come in and heard our county vote eight every year. So it's, yeah. There's a long history with this one.
That's what management says, if you wanna really do it right, go back to that.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so we're done with that one. Anything else?
Well, the only other thing I had was LTAP training that was gonna be going to this week and that was canceled by the blizzard, so that's two for two. So if anyone wants to know when the next blizzard will be, it'll be March twenty second. It's a learning transportation of portion, so it's classes that we need to basically get for very minimal cost for county employees. Rooms that we have to pay for to get down to it and takes a lot of different training sessions. So it's all on road from motor graders to asphalt to chip seals to culvert installations. This one was supposed to be supervisor handbook on, that they're just coming out to see. It was the first time they were at at this one to see who all did with benefit of sending to it, so. But the last time was supposed to be held in November, arriving in December and that had the blizzard where it was canceled. This time it's, you know.
All right, anything else for Jason?
Well, we wanted to.
Thank you, Jason, thank you.
Okay, I don't know, it's just gonna set him with that, I had that topic on the water and irrigation permits. There's gonna be, the way it looks now, they're going to the state water commission, if they get approval, it'll be two by coming out of Madatchik and one out of Fort Worth. So I don't know if, the way I looked at the plans, it shouldn't affect our county roads or anything. The one on Fort Worth, they'll have to talk to the Grand Forks County.
Irrigation laws?
Yep, irrigation coming out of both dams. So there, they could take so many feet and everything else and and. I guess as long as they go to state water board and everything, and our water board pretty much, you know, says it, so, and there's. There's a footage deal, cause I brought it up at the meeting today, I said, I got concerns, I said, we're always high in Nelson pumping, but I said, is there anything? That when the dams get so low, cause of recreation, fish, whatever.
Right, yeah.
And there's gonna be, Dan Gos was there, so they're writing up some agreements. And I don't, I don't remember if there was anything on the first one, I think there was, they stated it from state water, but I said, that was my concern, I said, you know what? We got these dams and they weren't built for recreation, they work for water retention, but now that we got fishing, everybody in there. I I wanted to see something in there on the footage to regulate that, you know what, when it gets so slow, you can't pump out of the water. And there is some regulation, there's, it it's a big process between the state to get these permits and then come back to our local water. I never realized it, I sat there and there was money and I'm just totally wow.
If we start letting these people take water onto these downs for irrigation, I mean, everybody's gonna wanna do it.
You can only take so much, and the trouble is.
So it's come for serps, whoever gets on the ball first is gonna.
Yep. 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 And the trouble is, these acro fires are getting to the limit, the list is so long there. That, you know, you're probably never gonna get it there, so that's why they're heading to these dams, look at Jim Langley and Edinburgh.
Yeah.
You know, same thing, they put their pipes in and move it and go it over here, you know? So, yeah, it's, it's.
So they're.
It's state water, so I don't even know if we really have control, you know, they always say, Connie, it's. It's state funded, that they're gonna have to check with NRCS and a couple other entities for the process. But I was, I'm glad I went this morning, cause I sat there for about an hour and I was just mad, you know?
So it's just an imperative thing?
Well, the two that applied for it are gonna, they've already talked to the state and they've been before with their permits. Now, whether the state approves them or not, and then that comes back to the county and Danny Gosden was there. Cause they thought with the footage and it was a license, not a permit, and it was called like a licensing, so they could stop it at some time or, so.
What what concerns me is we've seen how well that works with the footage.
Yeah. But I think these, I know one thing with these guys and and, oh, Lane was there running. And he, every year he fills out something and he had that paperwork there, how much water they use and everything else. So the state water board, this ain't like a Nelson County, the state water.
That's why I'm comparing it to the night.
Yeah. And I know.
Where's the control?
I know where you're going with that and that was my concern, but there was a lot of paperwork that he had that was audited or controlled and what he uses. He kept track of everything, they got meters on the, like on the pumps, on when it goes through, how many gallons each. I mean, it was, it, like I said, it was interesting, I I never knew how all that was involved in that, but to me, it seems like they're watching that pretty good. So.
What was Fort Worth dam in which one?
That, two on Madatchik and one in Fort Worth. And there's a lot of paperwork and everything else.
Two additional out of that?
Yep.
Two, so a little bit.
Two little three. Yep, and then one on Fort Worth. I just happened to see them in general, cause I get it now, I just said, you know what, and then I went and talked to them on the other issues we have with these stuffs. I'm gonna try and make it many of them, being I live in town, if there's something interesting on there that might affect us, I'm gonna try and go. Keep you guys informed.
So they're only looking at taking water over the downs, not raw water or anything?
There'll be pipes like going now and. Both of them pretty much, it's not gonna be something that, the the one pipe may be in there, but cause both of them fluctuate with Nelson and the flood. They can pull their pumps out and get them out of there and, you know. So it's, it seems like it was well controlled, the one that I really, really added that, I I was impressed. Just by what he had in the figures and how much control there was and people watching it and.
Well, they they control it that well on water, I mean, taking out, why don't they control it that well on water, going in and flooding us?
Christie, I wish, I wished I had that answer, cause I made that remark, I said, you know, we're not really worried, cause I said Nelson County pump so much that we never worry about the water getting too low. But it might, I was the one that brought it up, I said, I'm concerned with the water level, you never can say that.
Definitely could, definitely could.
In a drought and and I sort of got looked at and then all of them sort of agreed that there should be some footage or some. Whatever they could put in that license agreement and there it's gonna be.
State audit.
I just had a question, that guy, the state auditor, it sounds like there's a lot of negatives to this, the state body overcharging counties and their audits are going up so high. And it just, it just sort of hit the paper yesterday and then I went into some of it. One county, I don't remember which one was paying seven thousand, then all of a sudden this year, their audit was like thirty six thousand. Okay, so you're aware of it?
Yeah.
Did ours really go, and I guess I don't remember far, that's why I brought it up, but did ours go up this much or?
Yeah, I mentioned it to you, I think at budget time, I thought ours, because they were going up and.
There's a lot of concern at the legislature and everything about this and why is everything going up? And I just wanted to make you guys aware of it, that there's, seems to be an issue here. Some of his processes and what he's doing and regulating and auditing or whatever, there's not a lot of happy chapters out there.
They're staffed and, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We just finally finished up that one and they reopened and we're just, yeah.
And then, and the one county, I don't remember, trail with somebody locally, I don't remember the county, but they invited him and his staff to come. To open records meetings, so when it was on, they wouldn't even do that. And I'm going, point, I mean, you're trying to ask questions of why you wanna open records, but yet you won't come and answer. These people of why your audit went up and what's this, it just sort of stuck. So be aware of it, if you read more and you hear about the state auditor, there's decent questions going on there, will be interesting to see what happens.
New national opioid settlement.
Yeah, so, um. I included in your packet a new national opioid settlement, know this. I talked to Kelly about it, she said that you guys approved the first one we participated in, so she felt that it needed to come before you. If you want us to participate in this one.
Was this one at no cost again?
Correct, yeah. Um, the money has to be used for. You know, opioid related stuff, but um, just it feels possible we could use it for some of the jail stuff, Kelly was thinking.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we be going into this process and you know, might not get nothing and it might get something.
Yeah, yeah.
Didn't it look like it was coming out of, um, or was that the last one when they were putting in for, um. Who's coming into the jail, Agacy? That's the thought, is that's where it would go.
Yeah, to help papers.
Rehabilitation or whatever, that kind of stuff.
So if you guys want me to finish the paperwork and proceed with this settlement, I would need a motion.
We have a motion to pursue this opioid settlement.
Sold.
For second.
I'll second one.
Any further discussion?
So this you said is the second, this round or no?
Yeah, we already have, um, a previous settlement going on with just one company, I don't remember them.
Okay.
But these are against these companies now.
We haven't heard much from them, have we? That was that Curtis Oliphant deal, wasn't it?
Well, we're getting money.
Yeah, I know, but yeah.
Do we have, I mean, yeah.
You never know what you're going into, but if it doesn't cost anything, then why not get in it?
Just to make sure it's worth our time, we don't. Yeah, for the, for different costs.
Any further discussion? Now we'll call for the vote, Christie.
Yes.
Bernie.
Yeah.
Amy.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carried. ARP funds.
So at the last meeting, you guys were asking about our book funds. So I just gave you. A quick look at what we got for our book funds, how we made two payments to Agacy, that's where we're sitting and that the funds. Need to be obligated by two thousand twenty four and spent by two thousand twenty six, so.
Twenty six. Is that in our packet?
Yeah. Right off page, yeah.
So more or less just an FYI for you.
So we had six hundred and seventy thousand left there.
Correct.
So we did take in a million in twenty twenty two. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
On nine twelve twenty twenty two?
Correct.
Right, cause I was questioning last time at the, when the treasurer was in it, part of that boost was because of our book funds.
And it would have been. Would have been.
Yeah.
Yes. Cause we received it in September.
Yeah.
All right, Adams County Properties.
So I have had a couple of requests for our delinquent tax list with that parcel from Adams on there. People interested in. And I just want. So if someone's interested in buying it, am I selling it?
Why did we want it?
Yeah, even though it's, has issues.
Are they aware of the issues?
I, probably not, they're not locals.
Home boys. I talked to.
Tom? Yeah, bro.
I I think everybody's aware that tax properties come with, with pitfalls. I I don't know how much you have to have them aware of the fact that. There could be problems with the property, I guess it's a Kelly question, but. It's, it's not like you're buying a new house.
Well, as a buyer, you've got a responsibility to.
I think we had a couple of people that have bought tax properties and regretted buying them, but.
Do we have to put this out on business? I mean, like we have all the other companies?
No, it it just, now the list is out there, if someone's interested, they can just.
They can come in and buy for back taxes and.
Yeah.
I think we should sell them before they change their mind, absolutely.
Well, I mean, no one's put in an offer, but I did like three requests for the list in the last week and I'm like. It just, we didn't really specify anything in that last meeting, so I wanted to make sure I was.
Is this the only one on the list?
No, there's one in Fairdale also.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know, somebody wants to know quick or something, I call the chairman and somebody else, okay. So, you know, at least you're getting, I mean, why wouldn't we sell something, somebody wants to?
So somebody wants to buy it, it's open for sale, okay, I just wanted to be clear on that.
All right, selling concerns.
I do too, I talked to a couple other counties and, yeah, there's some.
Dash concerns type thing, just if you sell, turning out like that, you mean, that?
Yeah.
No, I haven't heard anything specific, but I guess I always think if you're selling property, you wanna be kind of careful who you're selling to, because you never know what they could bring in or do. So, but, yeah, just.
But you said you have the right to buy it.
Yeah, okay.
Back taxes if they wanna pay it out. I did talk to Ramsey County Jeff Frith. About what they're doing with them and he said. The fire department doesn't burn, but she said there is one of their options. But, uh. Said they generally don't have the problem with tourism of the lake there, that people stand in line to buy this. Evan County was contracting with somebody out of Grand Forks. To take them there, the county was tearing them down all, someplace in Grand Forks, I don't remember where it was, she said we could check with. Or Manny said we could check with them out of there.
But Ramsey also said that they had an estate, real estate company come in and just blew everybody out of the water on these, on their bidding. And then they came back and demanded a contract for deed. From the county. Somewhere in the century code. Which they're fighting because they want no part of it.
Mm-hmm, I believe that the commissioners, I think we put a stop to contract for deeds years ago, even though it's might be in century code. I don't know, the charter allow us to do that, but.
Okay.
Because yes, contract for deed is.
Not even.
And that's how. One of our regular complainers got his first parcel in Wash County.
Well, that's it. So, yeah.
So do you want me to reach out to Linda or?
Uh, no, I wouldn't at this point, I guess we'll see where it goes, if we end up.
Okay.
It would mirror the for back taxes, let's say, let it go, but, you know. Anything else?
You know, I don't know about you guys, but I've been getting a lot of questions and everything about these meetings, and. I got heartburn, we, we sit here and I look at you guys, I'm confused, and we come here in a meeting and stay here at seven thirty at night. And I, I know she's in Bismarck, but Mr. Anderson point blank told us that the, the county owed us something. Well, I think when everybody went out and changed their times, she owes something to the county, and I wonder at times if we're not getting the second fiddle on the county here. And I'm just stating it, cause I've got a lot of people questioning me on it and whatever, and I just wanted to go through that. I talked to you guys and mentioned it from these other people. It just, it just seems that there's a lot of people that miss, if you look at the session, they even missed the session during the day. So I don't know what your feelings are, I just figured I'd state it. She probably didn't like it, but I mean, when I get, and I don't know if you guys got a lot of people asking you about the situation. I just figured it's time to let somebody know that, you know what, there's people watching you and they're not real happy that you're not participating or doing your duty to the county. That's all I gotta say.
I've had some inquiries as to, is it legal, can you really do that? That's the inquiries that I've received.
I didn't realize it, but what, before I was here, Bill Gordon was one, and apparently he was both. But he drives back over the weekend for a two week meeting and then go back, so he was missing part of the session, but he did it and didn't affect anybody. And that's a long time ago, but I knew Bill was a senator, but I, that was before I was here, that he was coming back and participating like that, but. There, there is concerns out there and people aren't happy and, and I get it, I mean.
I get it, I get the tune, I appreciate you bringing it up, but we've, we've already voted on them.
No, I, I, I'm just saying that, and I get it.
I hear you.
Everybody changing things and she should, I, I think a committee meeting or something, she can miss and, and for one time on a meeting, especially when everybody else gives their times. You, you vote her, and then, you know, there's a lot of people that make tensions or whatever. And I know she's a young freshman senate or Republican representative, but I just, you know. How do you answer anybody in the county that asked you, she was in the committee, how can she do that? And, and that's all I'm saying. And I said, Calder, not me.
Yeah. Hope there's nothing else. Will we adjourn? My big concern with that is. I, I don't have a problem with meetings, but.
Oh, I rejected it, but, you know. And I do this before I do.